April 6, 2010. There he is, right on time. It's April 6, 2010, meeting the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order. We begin this morning with the flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes. If you please stand.
Our flag salute is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. If we could have the statement of meeting procedures this morning?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of April 6, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. All right, we will take public comment at this time. This is time for any member of the public to address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, understanding that the board cannot take action on any item presented under public comment. Please.
Good morning. My name is Paula Seelick. My husband, Arnie, and I live at 12868 Aaron Drive, Auburn, California. We moved there three and a half years ago from Forest Hill, where we resided for forty years. My husband served in the United States Air Force through World War II, Korea, Vietnam, retiring as a full colonel. While living in Forest Hill, I raised two children, worked there, and was an active member of the community. And, as you all know, have been active in politics and have known, probably most of you, since before you were in politics. Getting back to why I'm here today, the Bohemia Project is looming over our new little piece of existence here in Auburn. I, like many, read with interest the full-page ads that Mr. Kavold paid for in the Auburn Journal over the weekend. And, as he referred several times to the Auburn Bowman Redevelopment Agency, I'd like to ask, is that the same entity as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency?
It would be, yes.
It is, okay. If so, then, as the board members of that agency have, as the board members of that agency have, it seems, already made their decision as to the veracity of the Bowman Project, regardless of the impacts it will have on the established neighborhood and the community. As an active member of my community, I would ask that between now and the time the Bohemia Project comes before you for a decision, that you consider, as members of this elected body, as supervisors, unlike your positions as self-appointed members of the Redevelopment Agency, that you remember you have constituents that lead real lives, and many are suffering in this economy with home mortgages that are already upside down and who cannot afford to see them turned down any further. People who already suffer from breathing problems, small children live and play there, and we all pay our precious property taxes for what we expected to be a peaceful place to reside. Whatever ambient noises exist there now, we all understood and accepted them as part of the deal when we bought our homes, not the intrusion of some 900 to 1,100 more cars running around our peaceful neighborhood. The Bohemia Project will negatively impact many more than it will help. It's been said before, and I'll say it again, Placer Legacy would be a perfect answer to this problem. To turn a so-called blighted area into a parkland with walking trails would meet all of the Auburn Bowman or North Auburn Community Plan's expectations as a true buffer zone between residential, already-existing strip mall and Highway 49. The newly-formed parkland could even be named Jim Conkey Park. Thank you.
My name is Carl Coleman. I live at 2050 Canal Street, and I would like to speak in regards to the Bohemia Project as well. I am just one of about a thousand residents who live in that adjacent area. There are three homeowner associations, and I'm just speaking for myself. I want to say first that I am not outright against the project. I'm not here to voice my opposition to that, but I am adamantly against secondary access onto Canal Street, which is in our residence. As a Realtor here in the Auburn area, I am a strong proponent of individual private property rights. I do believe in responsible growth. But dumping 1,000 to 1,500 cars onto a residential street in this area, to me, is not responsible. I have attended the North Auburn MAC Planning Commission, where the MAC has recommended that they not have a secondary access onto Canal Street, that they only have emergency access only, which I am not against that. Also, I would like to point out that in this one-page ad that the developer, Mr. Conkey, has been running about the Bohemia Project, they state in there that they would consider closing Canal Street if the access on Highway 49 can operate successfully and if Placer County approves it. So I think the ball is back into the Planning Commission and the Supervisors Court as far as what your position is, and I would really encourage you to take a position on this because I think it's time to do that. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I'll leave you with this, I've traveled extensively. I've been back east a lot. I'm always amazed at the way they develop projects back there, particularly in New England. And one thing that always impressed me was back there, they really want to protect the ambiance of everything, and so what they do is they build these large berms around large box store-type projects, and they have one way in and one way out. And you don't even see, you don't even see the building. Now, I'm not proposing that we build a large berm around this 30-acre project, but I think one way in and one way out, and a lot of people are saying you need more than one access for that, but I think if you look at a lot of those projects on the East Coast, you will find that a one-way in and one-way out is perfectly acceptable. So I would really strongly encourage you to take a position on this, at least the Planning Commission, because we just need to know where the county stands on this. I think the developer has already said they're willing to give this secondary access up, but the inference is, is that you and the Planning Commissioner are the one that's pushing this and wants that secondary access. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Larry Needle. I live on 13180 Aaron Drive, which is off Luther Road and Canal. And I also represent several hundred homeowners who can't be here today because they're working or they are retired and can't physically get here to this public meeting. But I am here to speak on my two main concerns regarding the Bohemia Retail Project and Mr. Kavold's paid advertisement entitled "Bohemia Retail Project: Let's Get the Facts Straight." I purchased my property in 1981 and was fully aware of railroad tracks to the north of my property and the Bohemia lumber mill to the west. I'm fully aware that the Bohemia lumber mill property has been zoned for commercial use for many years. According to Mr. Kavold, subdivisions surrounding the Bohemia property were built out by 1984, and he purchased this property in 1987. Therefore, Mr. Conkey knew he was purchasing commercial property abutting subdivisions on the north and east boundaries with limited vehicle access. So my first concern is additional traffic. The only entrance to my subdivision will serve as the secondary access to this huge retail center. Traffic access to 155,000-square-foot retail building with 780 parking spaces, 18 fueling stations, and only two access points would cause an enormous increase in traffic congestion for this area. Mr. Conkey's town hall meeting presented the fact that 15% of the increased traffic predicted for the retail center would be expected at Canal Street. My second concern, then, is this Canal Street access to the retail shopping center. Mr. Kavold stated in Table 8.7 of the Bohemia EIR that 904 new-vehicle trips on Canal Street alone will be created to and from the shopping center, but those 904 trips include immediate neighbors' trips and trips from neighborhoods up Luther Road. So 15% of those over 6,000 cars does equal 904 new daily trips. However, there is another table, Table 8.8, which is for Discount Superstore, which shows the daily additional vehicles being 7,334. So 15% of that number is 1,100 daily additional vehicles on Canal Street. Both tables define the new proposed project trips as excluding pass-by trips and internal trips within the proposed project area. So whoever the tenant is, 900 to 1,100 new additional vehicles on Canal Street alone will be a traffic disaster for Canal Street, Luther Road, and surrounding subdivisions. In closing, I take personal responsibility to maintain and develop my property within the guidelines of my homeowners association CCNRs, and I only ask that Mr. Conkey maintain and develop his property within the guidelines of the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. The Auburn Bowman Community Plan does state that encourages land uses that accommodate commercial services, but at the same time, site constraints, design guidelines, and other land considerations may limit the development of very large commercial boxes or similar types of development. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lee Lively. I live on Tracy Lane. I want to thank you for the opportunity. We know that you, as we, are interested in doing the best and providing the best for our community. As you know, or may know, we have four homeowner associations that are directly affected by this project. All are unanimous in opposition to the program. The unanimity is with respect to the secondary access on Canal Street. Many of us, however, are opposed to the entire project, myself included. Since the EIR was, the notice of preparation for the EIR was made, we, in 2008, we have been busily promoting the active participation of our residents in opposition to this program. We have been busy, and as contrary to apparently that ad in this weekend's paper, I don't think anyone in this room would consider our activity as mob rule. However, one does wonder why Mr. Conkey does not disclose the name of his client since it is known generally. Thank you very much.
My name's Lois Fielder. I live at 1572 Cottonwood Circle. It's in the Woodside Village Mobile Home Park. You all drive the Highway 49, I'm sure, at one time or another. 7,000 extra cars a day on that road is just a travesty. I can't believe anybody would even consider a project that would put 7,000 more cars a day on Highway 49, right there at the busiest, one of the busiest highways, if not the busiest in Placer County. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment?
Hi, I'm Chuck Thiel, business representative for Stationery Engineers Local 39. The union has submitted a proposal in response to the county's desire to implement five furlough days during the first five months of fiscal year 2010, 2011. Understanding that in addition to the furlough, the county is planning on layoffs and contract concessions, we believe it would be better to consider options that meet the county's desire to save costs while protecting public services and minimizing the impact on the community, local businesses, and county employees. The goal of this proposal is to create a scenario that would give employees who so desire an incentive to separate from county service instead of laying off those that can least afford it. By offering separation incentives, savings is maximized by affording the need to pay unemployment benefits and employer Cobra contributions to otherwise laid-off employees. Furthermore, the separated employee has money to spend in our community instead of adding to the burden of our local economy with a laid-off employee applying for government assistance. In the city of Sacramento, Local 39's operation and maintenance unit utilized substantially the same voluntary separation program. Out of a bargaining unit of 1,800-plus employees, approximately 150 voluntarily separated from the city. The city of Sacramento figured that each vacancy saved about $100,000 in salary and benefits per year are roughly a total of $15 million. Currently, the county is looking for $5 million in savings from the general and professional bargaining units, which total about 1,940 employees. Given the size of Placer County's bargaining units, $5 million is easily achievable, even if Placer has a fraction of the participation experienced by the city of Sacramento. Due to the fact that Placer County has an older-than-average workforce with approximately 760 employees eligible to retire, the chances are that Placer will have a higher rate of willing participants. According to the latest persactuarial, the average county employee has 8.86 years of service and makes about $60,000 per year, or about $1,161 bucks per week. Therefore, the average employee participating in the voluntary separation program would receive $10,000 in severance payment or approximately two months' pay. Though this is an upfront cost, it is offset by the fact that the employee leaves without an 18-month entitlement to unemployment and Cobra benefits. Furthermore, the county saves the remaining $50,000 in salary, plus other benefits and roll-up costs, for the rest of the year. Furthermore, long-term savings is realized because full salary and benefit savings will continue due to the position being vacated or underfilled with lower classifications at any time. This proposal has many positive attributes. The voluntary severance program saves everyone the painful work of establishing layoff lists, meeting with affected employees, and the demoralizing experience of giving and receiving a layoff notice. This proposal can save the county from the need to implement furloughs, layoffs, and benefit concessions. Currently, the county is looking for $5 million through means that reduces service to the public, takes money out of the local economy, and reduces employee morale and the spirit of spreading pain. But what if we could save over three times as much without inflicting pain on anybody? Why wouldn't we do it? It is a win-win scenario that will provide the cost savings being sought without the downsides of paying unemployment, employer Cobra subsidies, and contributing to the economic downturn with escalating unemployment and home foreclosures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board under public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Angela Tati with Placer Arts, 808 Lincoln Way in Auburn. Well, 'tis the season. I just wanted to invite you and members of the public to this Thursday's Auburn Art Walk. It's a series of four free, family-appropriate events in downtown and Old Town Auburn. There are similar art walks in Roseville and in Tahoe, and you can read more about that along with the spring art tours and the spring issue of Perspectives. But this Thursday's Art Walk at the Arts Building, 808 Lincoln Way, kicks off the third annual Outside the Box exhibition. And we have 100 artists who were issued this year a nine-inch cube, and they could do anything they wanted, whatever their imagination dictated. They could create a work of art, and as long as it could come in through the front door and stand or hang of its own volition without harming the public, it was in the show. So I hope you will be able to take the time to come to the Arts Building. You can start this Thursday, but the show will run for two months, and there is a, it starts, Thursday night starts a silent auction, and then the culminating event is May 22nd with a gala live auction. It's an important benefit which supports the family and children's programs of Placer Arts and marketing and promotions of all of the arts organizations and artists in Placer County. So it's a very important event for us and very fun for families of all ages and individuals. We hope to see you there, and thank you for your support and for hanging these posters in visible places around the county. And for the public in the building today, did bring cards. And, any questions?
I don't see any.
Thank you. I'm not going to stay for the consent items. I have to be at a meeting in Sacramento. And Muriel Johnson, I will see her today, and she said next time I see you to say hello. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Anybody else wish to address the board under public comment? Okay, I've asked if Mr. Miller would just provide a brief explanation of where the Bohemia Project is in the process at this point?
Yes, just for the greater audience interest, for those that aren't aware, the board is not involved in any of the project at this point in time. The way the planning process works, comments are solicited from the municipal advisory committees that have jurisdictions over types of projects. Those comments, as well as the environmental documents, are taken in draft form to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on taking further comments on those public documents, the EIRs, draft EIRs. Once the commission makes a recommendation about a project to approve, modify, or deny a project, then that project then comes before the Board of Supervisors. So the Board of Supervisors has not had any discussions on the Bohemia Project. They have not entertained in any documents on the project, and I don't know if they've even read the press that's been printed about the project. But again, there's no decision process in front of the board. It has to go through a legally described process, back to the Planning Commission from the MACs, and eventually to the board.
Thank you, yes.
I just want to let the audience know that, yes, I have read the press. I have received a lot of your letters, and I've attended some of the meetings, and so I am fully aware of the process. But again, as Mr. Miller stated, it has to go through the Planning Commission, and that's, I believe, the next step for that. So anyhow, I'm fully aware of your concerns and have been listening to you as well.
And all that being said, thank you for being here this morning to offer your comments. I want to apologize to this gentleman for walking out in the middle of your comments, but thank you for being here this morning to make your comments. All right, we will go ahead and move on with our board meeting. We move from public comment to Supervisors Committee reports. Any board members? I guess I'd like to start by welcoming back Supervisor Rockholm and see that his recuperation was successful. Any Supervisors have any committee reports? Rocky?
I'd just add, being on house arrest for more than a month, it's nice to be back to work and feeling better, and my shoulder's healing well, and thank you for the thoughts.
All right, Supervisor Holmes?
And I too, Rocky, want to welcome you back. Been missing you around here. I wanted to talk a little bit this morning about the Regional Council of Rural Counties. We've been working with the State Water Resources Control Board and the California Conference of Directors of Environmental Health regarding the AB 885 issue that was rolled out early last year, received some, when they had their public hearings, there was a lot of outcry about how this was coming forward. So RCRC, State Water Quality Control Board staff, and the Environmental Health Directors Association have worked with the staff of RCRC, of State Water Quality Control Board. They're ready to open up some more hearings, probably the end of this month or early part of May. They are a little bit tentative about how they're going to approach this. They don't have a concept, they don't have a proposal, they have a concept proposal. So that's part of the, I'm sorry, but that's the way it's rolled out. So they've got three tiers. Tier one is, would be no additional regulation from the State Water Quality Control Board or the regional water quality control boards, basically as-is, the way we do it now, locally adopted ordinances are enforced. Tier two is a kind of a higher category, which would be subject, again, to local regulation. And basically, what it boils down to is that if your neighbor suspects that you have a problem with your septic tank, they can call the Environmental Health Department and have it investigated. And then the tier three would be the more, which the original jurisdiction came out for back in 2000, about any waterways that might be impacted by a septic system that is leaking or suspected of being leaking. Again, that's something that local jurisdiction would take care of. So basically, what's happened is we've worked with the State Water Quality Control Board and tried to make it more innocuous and basically doing the same thing we've been doing for the last, how many years? So anyhow, look forward to that coming forward for public hearings in the end of this month or the early part of May.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items that any members of the board wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any member, I'm sorry? Any member of the public wish to address the board on any item that's on our consent agenda? All right, Supervisor Rockholm's enthusiasm bubbling over after having not been able to make a motion for over a month.
There's one item that needs to be removed.
There is an item that needs to be removed?
Yes, if I might. Item 10B, we're requesting on behalf of Public Works that that be removed from your agenda. It's the Tahoe City Transit Center.
Okay.
It's on page 247 of your agenda.
Okay.
And it's regarding a word of a bid for that project. We've received a late bid contest from one of the bidders, and so that has to go through its process, and so that's being requested to be removed from the consent agenda and also from the agenda today.
Okay.
So I would amend my motion to include 10B being removed.
Okay. No second on consents. We have a second. All in favor, please, oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Rockholm?
Yes.
Wagan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Supervisor Montgomery temporarily absent. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to, we can take our 9:20 timed item at this point, Health and Human Services Public Housing Authority. We are going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors convene, excuse me, as the Placer County Housing Authority and hear the item on Health and Human Services Public Housing Authority federally funded housing assistance for very low-income disabled or elderly Placer County residents. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairperson Yular. Members of the board, I'm Cheryl Davis from your housing authority. With me is Nancy Dempsey, who is our awesome program supervisor over the day-to-day operations of your housing authority. We are here today with two requests before you. First is to conduct a public hearing and to receive comments on both the Placer County Housing Authority Annual Plan and the Five-Year Plan. The plans have been out for the required 45-day public review. That review period was noticed in our local newspapers, and that closed on March 24th. Planned copies were available at the Rockland, Auburn, and Kings Beach branches of the Placer County Library, and additionally, we provided a copy to Legal Services of Northern California and to the six members of your housing authority resident advisory board. To date, we've received only one comment, and that came from your resident advisory board member, who said she had no comments. And that actually is to be expected. There are no policy changes before you, just minor clarifications that HUD has asked us to make in lieu of some of the changes that they have made in their program. The second request before you is, after receiving any public comment and closing the hearing, to go ahead and approve the submission of both plans so that we can receive over $2 million in federal funding to continue to provide subsidized housing to 245 households in Placer County. And that is throughout the county, from Granite Bay to Lincoln to Colfax up to the Tahoe area. Of those 245 households, 76 are elderly and 54 are disabled households. The remaining are families with children. We expend 100% of the federal funding that we receive for housing assistance, and no county general funds are required. But presently, you have 552 households who are on our waiting list for assistance. With that, Nancy and I are here to answer any questions and to, now or after you conduct the public hearing.
Great. Any questions of staff at this point? Seeing none, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing to receive public comment regarding the Placer Housing Authority Public Housing Five-Year Plan for fiscal years 2010 and 11 through 1415, and the Annual Plan for fiscal year 1011. Any members of the public wish to address the Placer County Board of Supervisors sitting as the Placer County Housing Authority at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring her back to the board for possible adoption of the resolution authorizing the submission of Placer County Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for fiscal year 2010 and Certification Program Compliance to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Do we have a motion?
I approve.
Okay, a motion by Supervisor Holmes, and I think Montgomery snuck it in under the wire just ahead of Wagan. On the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. All right, we will go to our department head items.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's a good idea. We should do that, probably because the housing authority doesn't really care about administrative services and procurement, huh? We'll go ahead and adjourn as the housing authority reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors.
Self-appointed?
Yes. Yes. For all the same compensation, by the way, I might add. And we'll take up administrative services and procurement. I think we have a number of items that these gentlemen are going to walk us through. Good morning.
Good morning. Jim Bogan, Purchasing Manager, and we have been busy. Item 4 is requesting your board's approval to award bid number 9967 as a three-year blanket purchase order to UniFirst Corporation of Stockton for uniform rental and laundry services. The uniforms and laundering include work shirts and pants, coveralls, lab coats, medical scrubs, towels, floor mats, and other things. Work areas that use these uniforms and protective equipment include central services, telecom, building maintenance, parks and grounds, environmental utilities, community clinics, animal services, the public health lab, and the coroner's office. The three-year contract period makes it cost-effective for the selective vendor to provide brand-new products at the beginning of the contract. Staff recommends your approval to issue a three-year BPO and the maximum amount of $271,880.
Questions by any board members of staff on this item? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Any members of the public wish to address this item? Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Matthew Nicholas. I'm the General Manager for Airmark Uniform Services, who is your current uniform provider. I am here in regards to this bid that we have lost to you. And the reason why I'm here is I'm fighting for my employees who currently live in Placer County and as well as work in Sacramento County. Us losing this bid takes jobs out of our area and moves them down to Stockton, and employs people down in Stockton, and does not employ people in this area. Your current route driver that services here lives in this location and provides excellent service to the county. He oftentimes goes out above and beyond his duties and picks up and delivers product outside the regular delivery area in order to provide that service that your employees deserve. So while I understand the bid process was followed correctly and we lost that bid, I strongly urge you to reconsider because, you know, us losing this bid is revenue lost to our local residents.
Thank you. Any members of the board have any questions or comments? Supervisor Holmes?
Can you tell me the difference between the bid amount?
Airmark, let me first say that they've been a great provider for us. However, they were the fourth lowest bidder on this bid. There are two others ahead of them, but below the one who actually won.
Any questions by any of the board members? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir. We had a motion, I believe Supervisor Rockholm seconded by Supervisor Wiegand. I'm sorry? Was it the other way around? Wiegand made the motion, Rockholm seconded? Sorry about that. Both their names shall appear in the minutes regardless. Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to item B.
Item B requests your board's approval to award competitive request for proposals number 9964 to the Gordian Group for a job-order contracting system. Currently, Public Works and Facility Services conduct complete formal bid processes in accordance with the California Public Contract Code for every public work bid of $10,000 or more. This formal bidding process typically takes six months or longer, and is quite costly for the county. Fortunately, the Public Contract Code provides a streamlined method for awarding annual contracts, none of which can exceed $3 million, for repair, remodeling, or other repetitive work that can be done according to unit prices. And unit prices would be, for instance, a piece of wallboard or installation of a piece of wallboard. These contracts must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidders, and must be based on specifications for typical work. The contracts are typically referred to as job-order contracts. RFP 9964 requested proposals from firms that can provide a proven job-order contracting system. The Gordian Group presented the only proposal. Facility Service and Public Works managers who would actually run these contracts evaluated the Gordian Group's proposal as the RFP Evaluation Committee. These managers determined that the Gordian Group's job-order contracting system would streamline the bidding process considerably for applicable projects. Reference checks with the counties of Sacramento, Sonoma, and Solano showed typical reductions in individual product bidding time from six months down to one month, virtual elimination of change orders, and protests, and typical product, total project savings of 8% to 12%. Upon your board's approval, the purchasing manager will issue two contracts to the Gordian Group, one for Facility Services and one for Public Works. The Gordian Group will provide each department with an integrated JOC system and all of the support necessary to implement bidding and start awarding projects. The initial contracts will be effective from about April 15, 2010, through September 30, 2011, with possible annual renewals. The Gordian Group does not charge upfront fees for their services. Instead, each department would be charged a fee of 5% of the annual, of the value of the work ordered through the JOC program. The fee would drop to 2% when the department has achieved a cumulative volume of work equal to $6 million, and the department's cumulative volume of work during the preceding 12 months is at least $2 million. So staff would be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this proposal.
Questions by any board members? Yes, Supervisor Montgomery?
Jim, thank you. I do, this is just kind of for my own enlightenment. I see that we notified 61 firms, and we only got one response. Does that give you any concern that we may have put out a RFP that was not fully appropriate?
No, it really doesn't. In this particular case, job-order contracting is a very, very specialized service. The Gordian Group started this process roughly 20, a little over 20 years ago with the military, actually with the Air Force, so I'm somewhat familiar with them from the Air Force. They are the purchasing community's best-practice provider. And so really, we were hoping we would get another proposal from someone else, just to see if there was someone else in the job now, and there isn't. So they're best practice.
Okay, thank you.
And then, the $6 million cumulative is the breakpoint at which the percentage drops from, from 5% to 2 or 2.5?
From 5% to 2%.
To 2%. And that's on a per-department basis?
Per-department basis, correct.
How many of our departments currently hit that threshold on an annualized basis?
I think at the current time, you know, facilities or Public Works might like to jump in, but I think in the first couple of years, we probably won't reach that. As we get more comfortable with the system and run more projects through it, just as our reference counties did, I think we'll find that we reach those perhaps within two or three years.
Okay. And is there a reason why that is on a per-department basis as opposed to cumulative for the county?
There is. The Gordian Group will provide us a job catalog, which includes all of the kinds of services that are involved in doing the work for each department, and all of the pieces of construction equipment that would be required for each department. There's a difference between, for Department of Public Works doing roadwork, and for the Department of Facility Services doing restoration of buildings and such. And for that reason, those two catalogs are going to be very different, and so the Gordian Group, with all of the counties that they work with, separate departments like that, so that the catalogs are more specific to the department's requirement.
Okay. And as we look at our current contracting practice, and the current administrative costs associated with doing that internally, what does the 5% rate, how does that compare to our existing operations and overhead within the existing contracting unit?
Joel? Would you like to address that one? Since you are the department?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facility Services. I think you're referring to the 5% that Gordian would be charging.
Right.
In talking to the other counties, the way that they saw it, Sacramento County as an example, and Solano as well, that 5% is an overhead and profit that they're taking on top of a general contract we'll be taking. It really, it really maybe is separate from our staff savings, and what they're anticipating is about a 5% to 10% cost savings in staff time because we're not preparing bid packages, developing detailed drawings, and doing all that. It will depend widely on the projects, smaller projects, larger projects. So the 5% that they take off the top, anecdotally from the other counties using the system, they're still saying it's still coming in under their normally bid projects just for the contract value. So it actually comes out to be a savings if you look at the contracting portion of it. There's also a staff time savings as well. So overall, they're reporting between 5% and 15% savings per project.
Okay. And are, have the other counties, I believe you mentioned Sacramento, Solano, and I'm sorry, what was?
Sonoma.
Sonoma. Have they seen an increase in the number of folks responding to RFPs or project bids that are administered utilizing these services?
I'm not sure if they've seen an increase, but this contract with Gordian is really the first piece. The next piece is then Gordian works with us, and we put out to bid to general contractors who respond to that. There's a good-sized pool of local contractors that do this type of work. They specialize in, and then they basically bid the book that Jim was talking about. They put together their proposals and bid off of that, and then they end up being selected on price.
Right.
Then they turn around, the third layer is, then they turn around, and when we actually do a project, they use generally local contractors to do the actual work. For instance, if we're placing a window, we'll use a local window firm. So the pool is as large as our local contracting community.
Seeing no other questions by board members, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, do we have a motion? Motion by Rockholm seconded by Wiegand this time to approve item B. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Item C.
Switching up a little bit here. Good morning, Chairman Yuler, members of the board. Clark Muth, Director of Administrative Services. I'm here today to request your approval for change order number one to BPO 16517 with the State of California Franchise Tax Board for Court-Ordered Debt Collection Services and to authorize the purchasing manager to sign the resulting purchase change order in the requested amount of $630,000. To provide you some background on this program, the department has utilized the State Franchise Tax Board Court-Ordered Debt Collection Program since 1996 to supplement the department's efforts to collect unpaid delinquent court-ordered fines, forfeitures, fees, and penalties. This program has allowed over $18 million in revenues to be collected for Placer County to date. During the past several months, the Revenue Services Division has implemented new technologies and automated workflow procedures that have resulted in delinquent accounts being transferred to the state on a weekly basis instead of the previous processing time of two to three weeks that occurred under the prior manual process. Due to this reduced processing time, and with 22 months remaining on the current BPO, the department projects an additional $4.9 million in revenues will be collected through this program period. Based on these estimates, and the 15% administrative fee associated with the cost of collections, an increase in the amount of $630,000 to cover these expenditures through November 30, 2011, is being requested. The requested change order will not have an impact to the county's general fund as administrative fees for this program are reimbursed through Penal Code 1463.007, cost of collections, and increased revenues from the collection efforts. Sandy Conti, the county's Revenue Services Manager, is here with me today if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions on the item? And just for clarification purposes, we are anticipating an increase in administrative costs largely because we anticipate an increase in collections?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, almost $5 million in increase in collections.
Just want to make that clear. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion. A motion by Supervisor Holmes, I think the second was Wiegand on that one, to approve blanket purchase order 16517. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, can we move on to your final item? Once we rearrange the chairs?
Musical chairs, indeed. Jim Bogan again. Item 4D requests your board's approval of a one-year extension of our current five-year Microsoft Enterprise Software Licensing Agreement with Dell Incorporated, one of Microsoft's authorized suppliers. The Administrative Services Department negotiated this extension with a 500-user license decrease from the previous contract, saving $42,536 over the prior years. The extension provides the license and software maintenance to use Microsoft applications like Windows, Office, and Server and Portal software that are vital to county operations. The purchase order resulting from this recommendation will be $405,793.60, and will be effective from May 1, 2010, through April 30, 2011. Clark Muth and I would be happy to answer your questions.
Board members have any questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, I'm wondering what the cost is per user on this extension as compared to what it was previously?
We looked last night to make sure the extension is going to cost us about $130 per user. Currently, we're paying $135, so there's a savings of about $5 per user.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Members of the public have any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve item D? All right, well, by offering the second, he conceded the first, so we'll give that to Supervisor Montgomery, and the second to Supervisor Rockholm, for the one-year extension of the five-year Microsoft Enterprise Software Licensing Agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. All right, we have time still to move on with department items. We need to approve our minutes of our March 2 meeting. This is on our action items as opposed to consent, given the absence of Supervisors Rockholm and Montgomery, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our March 2 board meeting. Motion, Wiegand seconded, Holmes to approve those. If we could roll call, please. Wiegand?
Yes.
Rockholm?
State.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
State.
Yuler?
Aye. Thank you very much. And we move on now to Community Development Resource Agency, a planning item, and you look suspiciously not like Michael Johnson. So we'll hear from Mr. Clark this morning. Good morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Yuler, Chairman Yuler, members of the board. Lauren Clark with the Planning Department. The item that we're presenting this morning is a series of contract amendments associated with the ongoing preparation of the Placer County Conservation Plan. For $70334, we are amending four contracts, existing contracts. The first is with Thomas Reed and Associates, now known as TRA Environmental. They are the prime consultant who is actually preparing the actual conservation strategy. This is, again, an ongoing contract. We are supplementing a contract with House Rath Economics Group. They are providing services on financial options, as well as the fiscal impacts to the county. Also with ICF, formerly known as Jones &amp; Stokes. Their primary responsibility is preparation of the EIR in the EIS. And then lastly, with Norfolk Associates, who is assisting the county with issues related to wetland permitting and issues associated with the Federal Clean Water Act in particular. Each of the contracts is attached. All the funding is available in this year fiscal year 910 Planning Department budget. The intent is that these will supplement the work through the balance of this fiscal year and all the way through fiscal year 10 and 11. We are pursuing as contingency funds, in the absence of any general fund support next year, which is our assumption, a federal Section 6 grant. There is a program at the federal level that does support local communities who are preparing conservation plans, such as the PCCP. That grant process has been, or that grant application has been submitted, and we have had a favorable response. An award has not been made, but at least favorable remarks from those reviewing the grant. So with that, the Planning Department recommends that the board authorize the county executive to execute the four contract amendments, and we will then proceed with the balance of the PCCP. Here to answer any questions, thank you.
Board members have any questions of staff on this item? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? And we'll bring it back to the board. Motion by Wiegand, I think the second was Rockholm on that one.
You're, that's your good ear.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much, Lauren. All right, we move on to County Executive Office, Mr. Cunha.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rui Cunha. I'm the Program Manager for Placer County Office of Emergency Services. The item- The item in front of you asks that you approve recommended actions to acquire three fire engines already approved in the fiscal year 9-10 budget and identified in the Placer County Fire Apparatus Replacement Plan. This action includes the approval of a budget revision increasing the current fiscal year 9-10 budget by $253,750. Those increases are primarily brought about due to increased diesel engine costs as a result of cleaner legislation in the state of California as well as manufacturer cost increases. Specifically, in addition to the budget revision that is indicated here, your board is asked to cancel reserves in order to make the purchase of two engines outright, also to authorize a loan to North Auburn O'For Fire for the purchase of the third engine. Additionally, make corresponding adjustments to the master fixed asset list, and then finally to authorize a loan from the Fire Control Fund to Western Placer Fire Zone of Benefit, that's Zone 76, for two water tenders that have already been placed on order and are actually expected for delivery in this coming September. The current budget has an amount of $1,111,250 for the purchase of the three engines that I have discussed. By this budget revision, you'll be increasing that budget to $1,365,000, which will cover the full cost of purchasing the three engines that, again, were planned and scheduled in the apparatus replacement from this past fiscal year. The loan for North Auburn O'For Fire will be in the amount of $450,000. That loan allows Placer County Fire to offer an advantaged interest rate in the repayment of the loan amount, $450,000, where we'll be seeking simply to recover the cost that we would have normally received from the fund balance that exists within the Fire Control Fund in normal interest as opposed to an increased amount for debt payment, as an example. In addition, I mentioned there is an interest also to place a loan to Western Placer Fire, Zone 76, for the balance on two water tenders that are already on order and expected to be received this coming September. Western Placer Fire has already contributed $217,342 for chassis payments for those two water tenders, so the balance remaining for the purchase of those water tenders is $404,008, and that would be the loan amount. And again, same applies by placing a loan from the Fire Control Fund to the Western Placer Zone of Benefit, we are able to provide a slightly advantaged interest rate associated with that loan payment. For the board's information, the Fire Control Fund has current reserves of about $2.6 million. With those reserves, we're able to fully fund the upfront purchase of two of the engines that are discussed here, plus we're able to fully fund both the loan payments to North Auburn O'For Fire as well as Western Placer Fire. In both cases, Western Placer Fire and North Auburn O'For Fire have current reserves to repay the loan balance that is anticipated for the Fire Control Fund. There are no impact, there's no impact to the general fund as a result of this action, and as I mentioned, all of the funds that are discussed, both the Fire Control Fund as well as the two zones of benefit, have funding to accomplish these purchases. Subject to any questions that you might have, that concludes my formal presentation.
Board members have any questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Rui, I wanted to make sure I understood. This $1,361,810 amount, we're looking at these vendor discounts that are available. It says that the $31,238 is included in that figure. Is the $21,342 for early chassis payment included in that figure?
No ma'am, it's not. And we will, in fact, incur that savings through this process and with what I'm recommending here, so yes.
So that amount will come off the $1,361,810?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Holmes?
Just wanted a question about the old engines that are going to be taken out of service and put into surplus.
Yes.
Can you explain what putting into surplus means for those of us who don't, maybe don't understand that?
As you're aware Supervisor Holmes, with the purchase of these three engines, we will retire three older engines, and in the retiring of those three older engines, we will take those three older engines to surplus. The surplus process that we run through county procurement, ultimately those engines will go out to bid and they, and we will receive some funding, some limited funding that'll come back to the fire system as a result of the sale of those older engines.
It kind of bothers me because actually I helped buy one of those engines back in 1990, didn't seem like that long ago, but hate to see it go, it was a nice engine.
Maybe you can buy it, Jim.
No.
Ready-made for a parade.
I'm sure we can give you a bargain.
Any other questions by board members? Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Really just want to thank you for the time spent meeting discussing this item and how promptly you got back to me answering all of the questions that I hit you with in regard to the finance structure for this, so thank you for that. With that, this will, well, we'll need a motion first.
Reboot.
Okay, we had a motion by Holmes and I think I heard Rockholm on the second, so we will need a roll call for this.
Holmes?
Aye.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to Facility Services, we get to hear about what's going on in Rockland with the new branch library.
Thank you Chairman Euler, members of your board. Again Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facility Services. I have with me today as well Hope Bostic, our Capital Improvements Architect, and Rob Unholz, the Capital Improvements Manager, and Mark Parker, Director of Libraries. Should your board have any questions, one of these folks? It is actually my distinct pleasure to recommend that your board award the bid for the new Rockland Branch Library Ten Improvements Project Number 4702 to Sequoia Pacific Builders Incorporated in the amount of $2,304,000. And upon approval of County Council Risk Management authorized Director of Facility Services to execute the contract and any required change orders consistent with the county purchasing manual and Section 20142 of the Public Contract Code. A little bit of background, on November 17th, 2009, your board approved the plans and specifications and authorized us to solicit bids for the project. The bid solicitations were advertised in accordance with the Public Contract Code and documents were sent to 33 trade contractors and seven builders exchanges. Bids were opened by Procurement Services on March 5th, and we resulted in 18 bids. After initial apparent low bidder requested to withdraw their bid, Sequoia Pacific from Roseville is now the apparent low bidder with a bid of $2,304,000. The architect's estimate of probable construction costs for these improvements was $3223,000, so the actual award amount is approximately 29% below our estimate. We really benefited from a very competitive environment. The new Rockland Library, Branch Library is located in a building owned by the City of Rockland, and since the time the board memo was prepared, the city and county have been working to complete at least a document between the two entities. Just yesterday, Property Management County Council completed those negotiations with the City of Rockland. The city staff have committed to take their lease to their city council next Tuesday on the 13th for their approval, and our Property Management Division plans to return to your board on April 27th with the lease agreement and a property transfer agreement for the current library location. So the total project budget for the new Rockland Branch Library is $5,926,981, including the bid amount, and $3,622,981 for furniture fixtures, equipment, design, project management, bidding, fees and contingencies. The project has funding set aside in the Capital Projects Fund and is funded by general funds as well as the Capital Improvements Facility Impact Fee. So in order to proceed with the project, it is requested that your board award the contract, the new Rockland Library Ten Improvements. If there's any questions, be happy to answer.
Please Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah Joel, I just want to thank you and the staff that's worked on this, Mark Parker and I see Rob Unholz and Mary Dietrich and Hope Bostic, thank you for moving forward on this, I'm really excited about it. It's really going to be an improvement to the Rockland community, but what I really like about it, what I really like about it, is the old libraries moving out of District 2 and moving into District 3. Plus, District 3 will have three of the best libraries in Placer County.
There you go.
Supervisor Weigant? How's your mind too? Except for the last part, but, and also extend a thanks to the City of Rockland, it's been a great collaborative effort and all of our constituents down there will benefit tremendously. It's a huge improvement to the library system and I'm really looking forward to it, and Mark Parker and everybody that's put all this work into it.
Supervisor Rockholm?
I would echo those comments, but I would add one more caveat. Thank you that, for a Roseville firm, being able to, in District 1, being able to get this contract, so, but Placer County wins. Overall, its local building and the libraries are an important piece of our history, so to speak. Thank you.
So, oh Supervisor Montgomery, sorry.
I really wanted to chime in here and say thank you. Libraries, I think, are so critical, not just to our county, but to the future of our state and our nation. I think a literate, well-educated population is probably our best hope for the future and this gets us there. I'm very glad that you raised the issue of how much under budget this came in, because I did have a number of people say to me, gosh, you know, that seems like a lot of money, but it's really not. This is, this is a very direct investment in the future and thank you for putting it out there. Thank you for creating such a competitive bid process that we got such a great bid on this, and more power to you. Let's keep this up. Thank you.
Members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Reboot.
Second. A motion by Supervisor Rockholm, second by Supervisor Weigant. Supervisor Holmes sitting on the sideline and wondering what hit him. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We're going to go ahead and continue on Facility Services items. Actually, what I want to do is work through the rest of the staff-related items before we take our 10 o'clock timed items, so anybody here for that 10 o'clock timed item, we will get to it. I just want to work through our staff items at this point. Go ahead Will.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today, we're recommending that your board approve the attached ordinance to reduce the special fee charged to customers of Recology Auburn Placer, formerly known as Auburn Placer Disposal Service, from 8% to 7%. This action will reduce revenue to the Solid Waste Management Enterprise Fund by approximately $125,000 per year. A revenue reduction of this magnitude is possible because Recology agreed to fund two annual household hazardous waste events previously funded through the Solid Waste Management Fund, so now that money is available for us to return back to the customers. This action will also assist our efforts to avoid rate increases to Placer County garbage collection customers during fiscal year 10-11. Thank you for your consideration, be happy to answer questions.
Questions of staff? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board? I just want to clarify, with this action, we are reducing fees?
We are reducing the fee that we charge to the customer. In terms of the impact to the rates, it will offset a COLA that is due to the contractor, so therefore we're hoping to keep fees balanced for the year.
I understand, I wanted to emphasize that we're reducing? All right, do we have a motion?
Reboot. Second.
Motion by Montgomery, second by Rockholm. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. We will move on to the, Ms. Dietrich, I believe, is here regarding the Customs House property acquisition.
Chairman, members of the board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. Good to be back. The item, I am happy to be here with you today, is to recommend approval of an acquisition of a building in the Tahoe City area. This building is commonly referred to as the Customs House. It's located at 775 West Lake Boulevard in a central location, actually, in downtown Tahoe City. It is located on approximately a sixth of an acre and is developed with a commercial building, 11,400 square feet in size. The recommendation today is that you adopt a resolution that delegates authority to the Director of Facility Services or his designated to take all the actions necessary to complete the procurement of this building in an amount of $3,400,000. That you authorize disbursement of those funds and authorize the acceptance and recordation of deeds for the property upon completion and satisfaction of all the items in the option agreement. We'd also request a budget revision to appropriate the funds within the capital project account to be able to create an account to acquire this building, and that you also authorize the property to be added to the master fixed asset list upon close of construction. By way of a real brief background, you all are very well aware of our efforts in the Tahoe area for the Tahoe Government Center project. We've been at that for a number of years, three years and some change. As recently as last board meeting, your board approved an agreement to negotiate with BBLLC with regard to the King's Beach Project, which was designated as your highest priority candidate project for the formalized Tahoe Government Center project. We're committed to moving towards that project, but right at this particular point, and as has been said all along, that project is not going to be complete until at least fiscal year 14-15, so we have about four years or so until that project will be completed through its entitlement process and completed construction. In the meantime, of course, we always have continuing needs, and what we have in the Tahoe area is most of our tenants are in leased facilities. Right at this particular point in time, we have the Assessor's Office who is in a lease that will be terminating later on this spring, and they've requested that we look at newlyce facilities that would right-size their occupancy in a building. In doing that, we went back out into the lease market and were presented by the representatives of the Customs House initially for a lease opportunity for the Assessor's Office. In doing so, they represented that the building was available for purchase, and frankly, because we have had so much exposure to the Tahoe market, we recognized this as being an extraordinary value for a building that is a relatively large-sized building at a below fair market value cost. In looking at this opportunity in the larger context beyond just the Assessor's lease, we recognized that the West Shore occupants of Cedra and Environmental Health's lease will be up in June of 2012, and we had hoped that we would be able to make a singular move into the BBLLC project, but that doesn't, and will not be feasible, so we have an opportunity to relocate that occupancy as well. So in looking at it, we really felt like this was a unique opportunity. The property was previously listed for $5.2 million. It's bank-owned and was on the market for $3.7 million, so significant reduction. At the 3.7, that's $326 per square foot for building and land, which is more comparable to costs that you would see down in this particular area. As noted, we just really felt that it was a great asset that we could use and would provide value to the county for years to come, if not just for the lease, for transitioning when we ultimately work on the Burton Creek Project. We have prepared an offer that's been accepted by the bank that attaches a purchase and sale agreement to it, and that really is the decision for you today, is whether or not the terms are acceptable to your board. That would include a $3.4 million purchase price, which is $289 a square foot for building and land. It includes an option consideration of $100,000, which is applicable to the purchase price. Because it's bank-owned, there's a very short escrow on this. It would be 90 days of due diligence plus 10 days of close of escrow, so 100 days total to get this all done. During that period, we would be doing due diligence, which entails receiving permits, entitlement permits to use the building as a government office, similar to what we did with AAA. We also need to secure a variance for parking, and we would also be looking at due diligence relative to the condition of title and condition of the property. It's going to be a big effort, but we're confident that we're going to be able to achieve those during that timeframe. And execution of the purchase and sale agreement and the close of escrow is considered. And execution of the purchase and sale agreement and the close of escrow is contingent upon satisfactory completion of those due diligent items. From a fiscal perspective, it's, it's an extraordinary value. Land in, in the Tahoe area runs $50 to $60 a square foot for a location in this, in, in this downtown location. So it really is an extraordinary value. There will be tenant improvements that are required to continue to build out this project. Down here, they've been costing us approximately $50 to $60 a square foot to do those sorts of improvements. I don't really have a great handle on exactly what that will be in the Tahoe area, but we don't expect it to be extraordinarily expensive. There are going to be some lease generations, because there's two tenants in the building at this time, and they will generate $125,000 until 2013, when their leases expire and we can make determinations depending on our occupancy as to whether we would continue tenancies or whether we need that space ourselves. Looking at it from a perspective of avoided rents until occupancy of the BBLLC facility, we would be paying $550,000 in rents to a, to our respective landlords, and so that represents at least money that is retained in our pockets. Purchase of the property through rental savings really is a payback of a 14-year time period. It is an extraordinary, but over the years, we've spent a lot of money in leased facilities and because this is below market, we think it really is a, a very wise investment. Money is available in the capital facility fund and we recommend that, that we use those funds for this. We did look at debt issuance and because of the small issuance and the short escrow period, it's not recommended. There also is an issue with the private tenancies and the public financing, which is not ideal. So for a number of reasons, we don't feel that financing this acquisition is prudent at this particular point in time. With that, we do recommend that you approve the recommended actions. We have a letter of support from the Tahoe City Business Association supporting this action, and, and I would like to recognize Property Management, Mark Wrightout, and Lori Morris, who have really done an incredible job over a very short period of time to pull all this together so that we can take advantage of this opportunity. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Questions of staff. Supervisor Montgomery.
I understand the issue with public financing on the private lease agreements. Is that something, if 2013 comes and the, the private lease agreements are not continued, is that something we could revisit at that time?
I think that if there were other financings going on and there was a value to incorporating this, it certainly could be.
Okay, great. And on parking, I just wanted to clarify on the variance. This building is, for people who aren't familiar with it, it's where Starbucks used to be, and immediately behind it actually is the Jack Pine Parking Lot, which is the RDA parking lot that we built. And so there's some, the, the issue of parking is not nearly as daunting as it might be. And then last, but certainly not least, the fact that this is available for under $300 a square foot is unbelievable. I mean, you can't build a doghouse in, in Tahoe for $300 a square foot. And then I think most important to, to this acquisition, and Mary, I think you've heard these same comments, unlike the angst which is often raised by these sorts of proposals between Kings Beach and Tahoe City, everybody that I've spoken with in the basin is very supportive of this, because they understand that we do have these kind of shorter-term interim needs, particularly relating to the Assessor's Office and the West, West Shore Cedra folks. And then the opportunity to potentially move the folks from Burton Creek in there when and if we finally get around to that remodel is just, this is just really an opportunity we can't pass up. The, the value of this property will only continue to rise over the years. It's an incredible investment for Placer County, both in terms of putting folks out there, you know, giving them places to work and just long-term for our investment planning. So, thank you.
Any other questions by, or comments by board members? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for a motion.
May we adopt a resolution delegating authority to the Director of Facility Services or his designee upon satisfaction of the provisions contained in the option agreement to execute all documents and take all actions necessary to complete the property acquisition between the county of Placer and Nevada Security Bank in the amount of $3,400,000 to disperse funds associated with this transaction and to accept and record the deeds for said property.
And also approve the budget revision.
Should I do all three at once?
Yes, please.
And further to approve a budget revision associated with this transaction and third authorized property to be added to the master fixed asset list following close of escrow.
The second concurs?
Yeah.
Okay, motion Montgomery, second by Wiegand. My only comment, I guess, would be learning that there is uniformity of thought in Tahoe does provide me some concern. I believe that is one of the signs of the end of times. If folks in Tahoe agree on something, I think we already have six signs left now, but we're all done. All right, with that-
Snark noted and appreciated. Thank you.
With that, all, roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Okay, continuing on with Health and Human Services, Children's System of Care.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board, Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. The Placer County System of Care has in recent years participated actively in statewide efforts to further improve outcomes to the children and youth and families served via child welfare. Among a host of improvements in Placer, the number of youth in foster care and group care has been reduced by 20%. More than 140 children have been permanently adopted in recent years and compliance with other federal and state mandates meets or exceeds the standards in most cases. Most recently, one of our terrific social workers, Kristin Siles, was celebrated by the Polyclass Foundation as Social Worker of the Year. Kristin would be the first to tell you that she's one of, a team of dedicated professionals who have supported department efforts to seek the most efficient and effective use of resources and the best child safety practices available. Many of these improvements are also related to our outstanding partnerships, which exist between the county and community-based organizations. On a related note, we would express congratulations to Kids First for successful recruitment of a new chief executive officer this week, and we're hopeful and excited for Ms. Gregory and her contribution to the collaborative here in Placer County, serving children and youth. So these combined reports before you this morning are a detailed review and analysis, which capture many of our efforts, and we would seek your authorization for Dr. Burton to sign and submit to the state. There is no direct fiscal action associated with these documents, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions by board members? Questions by the public? Do we have a motion?
No approval.
Motion by Rockholm, second by Wiegand, under discussion. I had the pleasure last week of representing our board down at the recognition lunch or the, the lunch that celebrated the beginning of Child Abuse Awareness Month. The Class Foundation and another organization put on the lunch, and that's where Kristin was recognized for her efforts and recognized as the outstanding advocate against child abuse in our region. And, and Placer County, in addition to Kristin, were recognized for our very energetic and creative efforts toward ending child abuse with a number of programs that we utilize here in the county and the way that we reach out and incorporate the efforts of nonprofit organizations was, was well-recognized and appreciated by those in attendance at the lunch. So with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we'll take the Public Works items before we jump back in time to our 10 o'clock timed item. Peter Kratz, good morning.
Thank you, Chairman Euler, board. Peter Kratz with Placer County Public Works, here to present item 10A, which relates to request for approval of professional services agreement number 1017 for the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. This, this department item represents a major milestone for this project, as it signifies the completion of environmental analysis, and now we get to enter finally the design stage of the project. So we're, we're happy to be here today to ask for your approval of this contract. As you probably know, the, the project includes improvements on about a mile of State Route 28 in the community of Kings Beach and intersecting county roads, including bike and ped facilities, rebuilding of the highway from four lanes to three lanes, and traffic calming improvements in the back streets, among other things, including aesthetic improvements as well. With respect to environmental improvement, the project represents probably one of the most significant we've ever undertaken in the North Shore area for improving water quality in one of the most dense urban areas that we have up in Placer County. So the environmental agency support and, and how proud we'll be when we do this project for improving water clarity is, is a big part of this project as well. We requested design services back through a competitive request for proposal process in 2007, and back then, 12 firms responded, and Docken Engineering out of Sacramento was determined to be the highest-ranked firm. They've assembled a team of 12 subconsultants, because it is a massive effort, and six of those subconsultants are actually in the area between Tahoe Vista, Kings Beach, Tahoe City, and Truckee. So we've, we've got a good local representation of subconsultants and consulting expertise on this team. Environmentally, this professional service agreement is exempt from CEQA, but of course, the, the project itself was a triple-agency environmental document, and it was finalized with Placer County's CEQA environmental impact report being adopted by your board on September 23rd, 2008. The fiscal impact, we negotiated a price with the consultant for just over $3.89 million, and the funding has been secured from state and local sources, which is included in next year's department fiscal budget. The construction is estimated, as you can see in your board memo, at just over $36 million, so it's a, we think it's a reasonable price at about 10% of the estimated construction cost for this project. And so with that, formally ask that you adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works with County Council and Risk Management Review and Approval to enter into a professional services agreement with Docken Engineering in the amount of $3,893,865.52 for detailed design and permitting tasks related to the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project and authorizing our Director of Public Works or his designee to improve and sign future improvements up to $272,570.59. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Questions of staff. Supervisor Montgomery.
Peter, thank you. I'm very excited that we're moving forward on this, but Kirk, he'll be pleased to know that there's already some contention about this, so the apocalypse is not quite coming yet.
As to how that feels, consistent.
Want to, want to make sure that as part of this proposal, and specifically as relating to the safety improvements in the grid, that community input is going to be part of this process.
Correct.
Okay, because I didn't, didn't really see it in here. I mean, it, it was implied, but not stated specifically, and I just wanted to make sure, as, as we all know, the Kings Beach community is very concerned about what happens in their community, wants their voice to be heard, and just wanted to make sure that was going to be part of this process.
I would say, I think we have up to three public meetings right off the bat scheduled to talk about traffic calming improvements. That will be the first phase of this project. And, you know, as soon as we get our blessing from your board, that's one of the first things that we'll do, and, and reaching out. And Docken is our team leader, and like I said, they've, they're using local folks that I think know the community, and they'll rely on those local consultants, working together, working with county staff, like we have done in the past, for reaching out to the public. I think we've done a good job and we'll continue to go down that path.
Absolutely, and I think the county's done a phenomenal job reaching out to the public in the past. I just want to ensure that continues through the remainder of this process. And I volunteered to come help in whatever way I can to, to help this process move forward and just call on me.
Great.
I know it's really important to both the community and the county, so I'll be there when you need me.
Thanks. Great.
Any other questions or comments? Members of the public wish to address the board on this item? And do we have a motion? Supervisor Montgomery.
May we approve, we adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works with County Council and Risk Management Review and Approval to enter into a professional services agreement with Docken Engineering in an amount not to exceed $3,893,865.52 for detailed design and permitting tasks related to the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project and authorizing the Director of Public Works or his designee to approve and sign future amendments not to exceed $272,570.59.
Motion by Montgomery, second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Hold one sec. While I've got Mr. Kratz here, since we're skipping B, let's drop down to D and take Forest Hill while you're sitting there, please.
Yes, Chairman Euler, item 10D for Public Works.
Would you please turn your microphone back on?
Oop.
There you go. Thank you.
It went. Sorry about that. Again, yes, item 10D relates to professional services agreement for construction management and related services for the Forest Hill Road Seismic Bridge Retrofit and Paint Project, contract number 1087. As, as a background on this, the bridge was placed on the mandatory seismic retrofit list by Caltrans back in 1999, which really set up, paved the way for getting the project funded. Major effort, as you know, underway, and our design, design effort is close to being done. Therefore, we're moving out and we've solicited services for this effort. As you, as you can see in the board memo, the project's scope includes a major seismic retrofit and painting of the project. One of the things that's important is we've moved along with this project, as we propose to combine the seismic and paint portions of the work and bid the project as a single construction contract in order to take advantage of cost-saving opportunities afforded by combining these two project scopes or tasks. I want to just go on and just say how we secured the firm. Five consultants submitted proposals to the county and went through the assistance of procurement services, and the HANA Group was determined to be the highest-rated firm. I think their main office is in San Francisco and they have offices in Sacramento as well. They have teamed up with a couple of subconsultants locally, Valley, Cooper, and HDR. Environmentally, this activity, the professional services agreement activity is exempt from CEQA, but the project itself has an initial study mitigated negative declaration approved back in September 22nd, 2009. Fiscally, this effort has sufficient state and federal funding in place. The project is still in the mode of securing all necessary funding with the hope to advertise the project for construction bidding this summer. So formally, I'd like to request that your board adopt a resolution approving the award of the Competitive Request for Proposals number 9950 and authorize the Department of Public Works to negotiate a contract with the HANA Group for construction management, inspection, and materials testing services for the Forest Hill Road Bridge Seismic Retrofit and Paint Project, and authorize the purchasing manager to negotiate, approve, and sign a short-term contract with the HANA Group of not to exceed $200,000 for pre-construction and constructibility review services.
Questions by staff. Supervisor Rockholm.
I've got a question. I saw Supervisor Holmes on TV talking about this bridge. Are we, as we do this, are we going to look at putting up some barriers then or something maybe to deter some, some of the activities that are going on up there?
Part of the scope is to look at the railings and upgrade those railings and raise the height of those railings to some degree, and in, in the hopes of helping to further minimize those kinds of risks in the future. Absolutely. Yep.
Other questions of staff, comments by board? Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
No approval.
Motion by Rockholm, second by Wiegand, to approve item 10D Delta. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. And now Mr. Blazer will continue with item 10C.
I was also going to have him.
One, one quick sec, just for Supervisor Holmes. After this, we are going to take a brief recess before we move on to the timed items, so I just thought I'd let you know. We're going to take a quick five before we move on. So go ahead.
And he knows how quick I am.
Yes, he does.
The members of the board, Bob Blazer, Public Works Department. The Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program, CMAC, is a federal program that provides funding to improve air quality in the region. It's administered through the Sacramento Area Council of Government, SACOG, with project proposals coming from our Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, PCTPA. We have fair share funds that are ours alone based on population. We also have discretionary funds. The action item before you today is to prove, to approve a list of proposed projects that we would forward on in this competitive process and discussion process. A committee was formed and county departments proposed various projects. The list of projects you have in your packet are the prioritized items. One, replacement buses for our CNG fleet that are used between Rockland, Lincoln, Loomis, Auburn, and Placer County. There is a redevelopment project to provide pedestrian and landscape facilities along the recently completed Highway 49 corridor from New Airport War Road to Bell Road, and then there's a Class II bike lane facility improvements along Auburn Folsom Road. In addition, based on the competitive nature of some of those discretionary- In addition, based on the competitive nature of some of those discretionary funds, we tend to provide additional projects that may include potential funding. There is no environmental action needed here, and the fiscal impact is there is a potential local match on each of these projects, but the action item before you today is just to approve that list as it goes forward to these bodies, and as these projects come back, they would be brought before you for approval on the actual design, at which time we would go through the funding analysis at that point. With that, we would ask that you approve this item of the department approving the submittal of the candidate projects for CMAC funding to PCTPA.
Questions of staff? Any members of the public have any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Montgomery to approve item 10C. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Okay, we will take a quick five. Please try to be back by 10:35 so we can take up our 10 o'clock timed item. Thank you very much. All right, and now we will go ahead and reconvene the April 6th meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, having dispensed with all department head items. We have two timed items and then a litany of closed-session items that we'll get to, but we will go ahead with the 10 o'clock timed item with the emergency services. Once again, Mr. Cunha, please.
Morning. Once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Rui Cunha, Program Manager for Placer County Office of Emergency Services. The item in front of you asks that you conduct a public hearing, adopt an ordinance amending Placer County Code, Article 2.116, by adding Section 174 relating to fees for service provided by Placer County Fire to at-fault non-Placer County Fire residents involved in motor vehicle accidents. Additionally, this item asks that you approve a resolution establishing a fee schedule to incorporate those rates customary and reasonable for fire service cost recovery through automobile insurance policies. Lastly, this item asks that you approve an exemption to the competitive bidding process based on findings consistent with the Placer County procurement policy and authorize the procurement officer to sign a one-year contract for billing services. Members of the board, this item is about helping sustain the level of emergency services provided and funded by local taxpayers of Placer County. Should your board approve this item today, you'll be joining the governing boards of most independent fire districts in Placer County, as well as the cities of Roseville, Rockland, and Colfax, as well as many jurisdictions in the state of California, who've looked at the issue of sustaining acceptable levels of local services and deemed it necessary and appropriate to recover costs from non-resident vehicle insurance when their actions result in cost to locally-funded fire service. The cost of responding to motor vehicle accidents where a non-resident is at fault negatively impact community-funded service levels. This item would allow the recovery of that portion of costs that have been deemed by the automobile insurance industry as customary and reasonable. As your board is aware, Placer County Fire provides fire service commensurate with the community-approved funding levels for each community. The current economy, and in particular its impact on property tax revenues, which are critical to fire service funding, have put at risk service levels that our communities have become accustomed to. In calendar year 2009, Placer County Fire responded to 529 motor vehicle accidents. Approximately 370 of those accidents involved non-Placer County Fire residents who were at fault at the time of the accident. Motor vehicle accident response costs consume expendable supplies. They also add to equipment and vehicle wear and tear. They also commit personnel and equipment, and in that commitment, those personnel and equipment are not available to the tax-paying community that has funded that service. This item attempts to recover some of those costs. Most automobile policies include an emergency response coverage, and those jurisdictions that have approved similar ordinances to the one that I have proposed to you today are recovering through claims as a result of motor vehicle accidents involving at-fault drivers. We estimate that we will recover approximately $120,000 in fiscal year 1011 if this item is approved today. In addition, attached to your packet is a resolution that establishes a fee schedule that forms the basis for cost recovery. The fee schedule, which is expanded in some jurisdictions to include other types of responses, but in the case of Placer County Fire, is only provided to you for motor vehicle accidents. This same fee schedule is the one that's being used by all of the jurisdictions in Placer County that have currently approved ordinances. Those jurisdictions include independent fire districts such as South Placer Fire Protection District, the Loomis Fire Protection District, Penrin, Newcastle, Forest Hill, Placer Hills, North Tahoe Fire Protection District is planning on bringing a similar item to their Board of Directors here very shortly, likely next month, and as I mentioned earlier, the city of Roseville, the city of Rockland, and the city of Colfax. All of those entities are using the same fee schedule that we have proposed to your board for approval in the resolution. The fee schedule that is provided comes to us recommended because it is deemed as customary and reasonable by the insurance industry associated with cost recovery for motor vehicle accidents. Lastly, this item asks that your board approve an exemption to the competitive bidding process based on findings that are consistent with the Placer County procurement policy. Those findings include that fire response cost recovery billing is a specialized service that uses advanced techniques and methods, specialized knowledge, and expertise in order to recover a significant percentage of costs associated with claims. In addition, it is our intent to recommend that Fire Recovery USA be the contract entity associated with billing for these services. Fire Recovery USA provides such services and was selected by the city of Roseville after a competitive bidding process in early 2009, and provides services to all of the fire jurisdictions that I mentioned in Placer County to date. Lastly, Fire Recovery USA is familiar with all applicable state laws and insurance regulations and can begin processing cost recovery claims within 60 days of executing the contract. Finally, there is no impact to the general fund as a result of this action. This action, in fact, will assist fire service in recovering some of its costs associated with motor vehicle accidents, and specifically those services provided to non-Placer County Fire residents. Subject to any questions that you might have, that concludes my formal briefing. Let me add very quickly, I'm joined by Assistant Chief Randy Smith, and Assistant Chief Randy Smith will assist with any specific questions that you might have related to responses.
Supervisor Holmes?
I just wanted some clarity about non-Placer County Fire residents. So if I'm driving down to Roseville and cause an accident, Roseville Fire Department can bill my insurance?
That is correct.
Right now, yes. And conversely, if we pass this ordinance and someone from Roseville comes into North Auburn and causes an accident, we'll be able to, the fire district can bill the Roseville residence, the insurance company.
That's correct.
So we're not billing the driver, we're billing the insurance companies.
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify on that.
Comments by any other members of the board? Okay, going to go ahead and open the public hearing to consider the adoption of this ordinance. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Don't all rush at once. You'll have your turn. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Holmes?
As the board is aware, I've had 16 years of service on the Placer Consolidated Fire District Board, and I'm fully aware that the costs of providing services to residents, public safety services, far outweigh the revenues that are provided by law, and I think this is a good way to supplement some of those revenues without causing costs to the taxpayer. So I fully support this and make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Montgomery. Any of the board members have any comments or questions? Roll call, please. Holmes?
Hi.
Rockland?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yuler? Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, we have about 15 minutes before our last public item, which is our 11 o'clock Community Development Resource Agency Planning Zoning Text Amendment regarding medical marijuana collectives. I don't know if 10-ish minutes is enough to get into any of our closed-session items.
If I could get one or...
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take up a couple of closed-session items at this point.
The board will now go into closed session on page 5, item 11 of its agenda. There's a series of existing litigations which are discussed, and I know we won't get to labor discussions, and I doubt that we'll get through all the litigation matters in the 10 minutes we have, but we'll get started.
Okay, we'll be back at 11 o'clock for our timed item. Okay, we'll be back at 11 o'clock for our time item. Okay, Tony, if you would, please.
The board has returned from closed session and taken up the items on Page 5, Items 11. With regards to the first case, Duffler-Castner versus the County of Placer, the board received a status report and authorized the matter be handled by the county council's office, and that the county council's office will defend the county and all named defendants with the standard reservations and waivers of conflicts. The board also discussed Item F, Lead to Save Lake Tahoe versus the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. The real parties and the petitioners have come to a settlement. The settlement has been approved also by the Board of Supervisors. I believe the chairman actually signed the documents this morning. If anyone really wants to review the settlement agreement, it will be made available. I think Mr. Finley has a copy of it from my office. The board also, in anticipated litigation, took up the Resource Law Group's contract for its continuing support with regards to the PCCP and extended that contract. No other items in closed session were discussed. We will return to closed session later today.
Thank you, and lest I forget to do this later, just want to announce that when we do adjourn our meeting today, we are going to do so in recognition and honor of the passing of former Placer County Road Superintendent, worked for Placer County for 42 years. Stephen Krieger passed away on March 2 at his home, and so we'd just like to recognize his contribution to Placer County, to our workforce, and adjourn our meeting at the end of this item in recognition and memory of him. So with that, we will turn it over to Mr. Johnson to introduce the item, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item before you today is a zoning text amendment regarding the consideration of regulation for medical marijuana collectives, cooperatives, and dispensaries. As the board is aware, the issue of how to regulate medical marijuana has been very much in the news for many agencies throughout the state. Even as recently as this morning, there's an article, front page article, in the Sacramento Bee regarding how Sacramento City and Sacramento County are looking to regulate collectives, cooperatives, and dispensaries within their boundaries. Staff has been analyzing this issue for the last six to eight months, and based upon staff's analysis, we have prepared a zoning text amendment for your consideration this morning. Jennifer DeZackewick, who has been the lead planner on this, will be making today's presentation.
And thank you, Jennifer DeZackewick, Senior Planner, Planning Department. And we're going to start with a brief overview. Again, Michael introducing the item. We're talking about a proposed zoning text amendment that would define medical marijuana collectives, coops, and dispensaries, as well as disallow these uses, land uses and businesses in all zoning districts within Placer County. In addition, the zoning text amendment includes a clarification that crop production and agriculture processing do not include cannabis. And we're going to get into a little bit of the background. The federal and state laws here, as you're, I'm aware, they do conflict. The federal legislation states that marijuana use for any purposes is illegal, and as you also may be aware, in 2009, the U.S. Justice Department came out and recognized that they would not be prosecuting any medical marijuana dispensaries that were operating legally under existing state laws. Existing state laws in California include the Health and Safety Code that allows access for seriously ill residents to have access to medical marijuana for medical purposes. Existing Placer County code, the zoning code, does not define this land use. California legislation Prop 215, also known as the Compassionate Use Act, was passed in 1996 and allowed for seriously ill patients to have access for medical marijuana for medical purposes. It provides a legal defense against arrest and criminal prosecution, and it also encouraged the federal and state governments to work together to provide safe and affordable distribution of medical marijuana. In 2004, Senate Bill 420, the Medical Marijuana Program Act, was adopted, and that created the medical marijuana program statewide, which is the ID program. County currently participates in this program. They've issued, the last time I checked with HHS, 7D cards in Placer County have been issued, ID cards. And these amendments that were proposing would not affect the county's compliance with that state program. Senate Bill 420 also broadened against arrest and criminal prosecution for some transportation, as well as added some additional users, and discussed collectively and cooperatively cultivating medical marijuana. And it also limited where you could smoke and consume marijuana. And as part of that legislation, the AG, the Attorney General, was directed to put guidelines together. And the guidelines, the California Attorney General Guidelines, came out in 2008, and they were to ensure that the security of marijuana grown for medical purposes was not diverted for illegal or illicit persons to non-patients. It was also to help ensure law enforcement would comply with the law, and to help patients and caregivers to understand and comply with the law. Included in your staff report, it was attachment two. Understanding the terminology within the AG Guidelines, what's a primary caregiver? According to the guidelines, a primary caregiver is a person who's been designated by a qualified patient and has consistently assumed responsibility for the housing, health, and safety of the patient, and is not simply somebody that would just provide medical marijuana to a patient. It also discusses the, what is the AG Guidelines, what is collectives and cooperatives? The co-op is a group of association of medical marijuana patients and primary caregivers that associate in order to collectively or cooperatively to cultivate medical marijuana for medical purposes. That's actually the text out of the AG and out of the state law. It did not provide for businesses to call themselves a co-op or organize... It did not provide for businesses to call themselves a co-op or organize. They have to be registered as a corporation or under the Food and Agriculture Code. And collectives or organizations that facilitate or collaborate efforts between patients and caregivers, and a lot of the description included in the AG Guidelines stated not-for-profit. And there's also case law that shows that neither the purchase of marijuana nor the sale of marijuana to non-members was considered part of a collective. And what is a dispensary? Again, a dispensary is a typical retail storefront. They can be for-profit, not-for-profit. And again, the word dispensary does not appear in any of the legislation for Proposition 215 or 420. There is some discussion in the AG Guidelines about dispensaries. And current estimates is there's about 400 to 800 dispensaries operating in California, but really, nobody knows. There's no state regulation of dispensaries within California, like maybe licensing for alcohol. Use regulations in state law, again, the compassionate use and SB 420, those laws were enacted to provide criminal sanctions for qualified patients and caregivers to possess, transport, and associate together in collectives and co-ops. There was no statutory mandate that required that Placer County permit these types of land uses and businesses practices. There are options that talk about land use regulation options, one of which is adopt an ordinance to regulate. Another option would be to disallow, adopt an ordinance, disallow this use, or adopt an ordinance for moratoriums. In California, there's approximately 121 cities and eight counties that have banned dispensaries altogether, and 42 which have proposed regulations. Adjacent jurisdictions, counties surrounding the county or touching Placer County's boundaries have two bans, and I'll show an exhibit after this, two that disallow this use, one moratorium, and cities within these jurisdictions, two that regulate, eight that have adopted bans, and four moratoriums. And this is the exhibit that goes along with that. It would be Nevada County to our north that has adopted a moratorium. Eldorado banned. Sacramento is and exists in somewhat of what Placer County's current regulations are. It's not defined and therefore not allowed land use within the county. Sutter County has banned. Yuba, again, not defined. There are two jurisdictions, Placerville and Elk Grove, that have adopted regulations. And staff here is proposing a zoning text amendment. And the zoning text amendment has come forward. The county has received multiple requests for business license for medical marijuana collectives and co-ops and dispensaries. We've determined that there's no zoning districts that have allowed for this established land use, and therefore, we're bringing forward the zoning text amendment to formalize this policy. And we'll go real quickly here. The definition is included in your staff report. Again, the second zoning text amendment talks about agriculture processing and crop production, and a little bit of discussion of what's included. The definition would disallow medical marijuana collectives and co-ops as land uses and business practices. I think it's important to note that staff, in researching this issue, has not looked at or engaged in the debate of the medical marijuana use. We're talking here about businesses and land uses in Placer County. And what's not defined in this would include health clinics, health facilities, residential care, hospices. These are all defined under state code and already exist in our zoning regulations. So those types of facilities are not included in the definition. And staff's research has focused on reviewing the legislation and researching other issues, and concluded that there is a legitimate public safety issue associated with co-ops, collectives, and dispensaries. One of the important items that staff focused on was the 2009 California Police Chiefs Association staff report that was published. That was a three-year study and included 30 persons and various agencies that participated in developing that study. The report concluded that when dispensaries were open, there were reports of increased or illegal drug activities, illegal drug sales, robberies of persons, loitering around dispensaries, falsely obtained identification cards. Additional information was provided by the Placer County Sheriff's Department, which included a presentation on the summits of impacts for medical marijuana. And that information included that there are dispensary-related crimes. Most of them go unreported, and there's also crimes that are associated but not recorded, such as robberies and home invasions associated with the supply chains, and nuisances associated with the growing operations. On January 28th, the Planning Commission recommended five to one for support of the proposed zoning text amendment to the Board of Supervisors. In addition, we've taken this zoning text amendment to multiple advisory councils. Four of the advisory councils, being the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, Medavista, the WACMAC, Squaw Valley, all recommended there be consideration of regulatory ordinances. Newcastle-Ofer, as well as Rural Lincoln, supported the proposed zoning text amendment. And then Penrin, as well as Forest Hill Forum, both had a discussion and ultimately adopted, Penrin recommending a moratorium, and Forest Hill recommending that we wait and see what happens with the proposed legislation in November that would legalize marijuana for recreational use. Sheridan took no formal action, as well as the Granite Bay Placer, West Placer, did not request the presentation be heard, and North Auburn and Horseshoe Bar, there were no meetings in March. So with that, staff recommends support of the zoning text amendment and is available for any questions.
Tony has a comment.
Yeah, this morning, distributed was a document that appears like a proposed ordinance. Supervisor Montgomery has worked with our office and CEDR staff with a proposed alternative. This is not actually before the Board today. It's here for discussion. I think the supervisor will take it up. But I wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion that her recommended action will be discussed, but you can't actually vote on it today because it hasn't been appropriately noticed, et cetera. And with that, that's the end of my comments.
Questions of Board members for staff based on the presentation at this point, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes. Jennifer, thank you. One of the things that you referred to, I think on slide 14, was places where this would still be available, that would not be addressed under this ordinance. Clinics, health facilities, residential care facilities, hospices. Do you have any idea how many hospices or other entities that fall under this description exist in District Five or the other districts?
No.
Okay. And my concern on that, just the reason I ask the question, is that while these definitions would not be included, there may be a geographical situation where, frankly, they would not be available to folks in the east end of Placer County. I know that there is, for example, one hospice. It's actually in Truckee, so it's in Nevada County, and it's over-enrolled. There's a waiting list. So my concern is that even though technically this would still be allowed uses, I think we should look at the actual on-the-ground practicality of that. What opportunities would be available to people who did have legal cards and have these legal uses? So that's a concern of mine. I want to make sure I understood on your review of the MACs. It sounded like it went to a total of eight MACs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And of those eight MACs, six were either in opposition to the county proposal or suggested a moratorium, and two were in support of the county proposal?
Correct. Although I would add that the Forest Hill Forum, the motion that I had this morning before me did not include anything on a moratorium or anything about regulation. It was simply just a wait and see, so...
Right. They asked, if I recall, that we wait until after November and see what happens with that election. Okay. Do we know, I know you said that there are 70 cards that have been actually processed by Placer County. I know that we also accept cards from out of the county. Do we have any idea how many authorized card bearers, for lack of a better term, there are in Placer County in addition to the 70 we've processed?
No. And the card ID program, it's not a requirement. You can simply have a recommendation. Again, the card ID program was to help both the patient and law enforcement to prevent arrest if you were walking down the street and the, you know, law enforcement came over and started questioning you. You could have an appropriate ID to say, "I've got the doctor's recommendation." It is not required anywhere for anybody with a recommendation to participate in those programs. And you can have one out of jurisdiction.
Okay.
So the number 70, I included that as, there was a question that came up early on of how many people are actually participating in Placer's program. And also, again, nothing that we're proposing here would affect that. That was simply to help law enforcement and patients to identify themselves as such.
Understood. Thank you. Have we, have we had any specific reports of incidents at the Colfax facility?
No. And, you know, I did do some research into the Colfax and contacted the Sheriff's Department. And there is one, and I apologize, I did leave that part out of my presentation. There is an existing dispensary operating in Colfax, and they were illegal, or illegal, and they came in, a business license was issued up in Colfax, as well as then a moratorium was put in place by the city council. And after that, they came in, the Colfax, and banned or disallowed any additional types of businesses opening in their community. There are, according to the Sheriff's Department, no additional incidences that were associated with the actual retail business. But he did go on to describe that the concerns with law enforcement is upon the supply side. They don't have the statistics to talk about the supply for that particular dispensary, but they had concerns with the supply chain for home invasions and other issues coming up that would not be reported directly with that retail use.
But they, just so I understand, they had no statistics on either side to support that that actually was a problem or was not a problem?
Correct. They had no incidences at that dispensary.
Okay. What effect would this have on existing delivery models? Because it's my understanding that there is a licensed delivery program in the town of Truckee in Nevada County, but they deliver into Placer County. Would that still be an allowed use under this?
No, that would not be an allowed use. In particular, if you look at the definition, it includes even mobile. Let me move here to the definition so I can read. It includes any facility or vehicle. So we would consider a mobile dispensary or mobile collective co-op a vehicle, and we would not issue it a business license.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Other Board members have questions? Jennifer, my question. You mentioned four MACs specifically that requested that these, I guess, be allowed by ordinance, and that was North Tahoe, Medavista, Weimar, Applegate, Colfax, and Squaw Valley. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And their request was specifically that we recognize these by ordinance or allow for our ordinance to permit the location of these dispensaries?
I think that the NITREC, their recommendations and their actual specific motions were included in the staff report, talked about having staff look at developing and researching some type of ordinance that would regulate these businesses. I just want to make sure I get this correct, so I'm referencing my notes. The WACMAC recommended the county adopt a moratorium and establish medical marijuana collectives, co-ops, and dispensaries, basically, again, creating regulation. And Squaw Valley, again, denied the staff recommendation and disagreed with the conclusion about the land use requests, and requested that the Board take a proactive step in regulating and taxing these businesses and not to decriminalize marijuana, but to make it a benefit to the county. They also found that the proposed zoning text amendment was in blatant violation of the spirit of California legislation regarding marijuana. And that included all four. So I don't want to say they all said regulate. They all had different information that was presented.
Did any of the MACs, understanding the MACs, have, at least most MACs I've encountered, have fairly good understanding of the area over which they have jurisdiction? Did any of those MACs provide staff with any specific locations where they thought it might be suitable for dispensaries to be located?
No.
They didn't make recommendations saying, "We think in these areas, we should entertain permitting dispensaries"?
No, none of the recommendations provided that kind of detail.
Okay. All right. Any other comments by any of the Board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Any members of the public wish to address the Board on this item, please step forward. We will try to, if you would, try to limit your comments to three minutes. That would be great.
Hello, I'm Lynette Davies. I run a crusader for patients' rights, which is a patients' rights activist organization out of Sacramento. And I've also been running Canacare, which is a dispensary in the city of Sacramento for the last five years. And what I brought for you today is a little bit of information, because that did touch on a few things. And I brought one of these for each of you, as a matter of fact. And I was just to go over really quickly a little bit to add to Jennifer's report, such as in Proposition 215 on Schedule C, it specifically states that it was put there to encourage the federal and state governments to implement a plan for safe and affordable distribution of marijuana. Now, there's been a lot of conflicts. So then we went into SB 420 to get a little more definition onto it. And again, they brought into SB 420 that marijuana was to be available for any and all chronic pain. That was recommended by a physician. And a designated primary caregiver who transports, possesses, administers, delivers, or gives away any marijuana is also recognized. And that only a qualified patient or primary caregiver to the person with identification card. So your card system was brought up a little bit. But again, they went into a little bit. So we had state clarification that this was illegal content. Then we went into some legal cases, and we went into the big Supreme Court case, which was your rash decision. That decision does not say that the laws of California or any other medical marijuana state are unconstitutional. It does not invalidate any of them in any such way. Then we went into Guidelines for the Attorney General. He went into great detail on these Guidelines. These Guidelines are for the patient, for law enforcement, for your local governments, and it was for collectives and distribution. Part of what you will find on the state Guidelines are Guidelines regarding collectives and cooperatives. The very first thing, A, business forms, business forms. Cooperatives must file articles of incorporation if you're a cooperative. Collectives, as such, a collective is not a statutory entity, but in a practical matter, it has the right to organize as some sort of business to carry on its activities. Permissible reimbursement and allegations, it has a combination of how they are reimbursed. Possession Guidelines and cultivation, it has to do with transportation, operating, location, distribution of members, is defined by the state law. location, distribution of members is defined by the state law. Storefront dispensaries, which I saw on your screen there, there was a sentence on there, but this was not in this part of it. This says, "It is an opinion of the office that the properly organized and operated collective or cooperative that dispenses medical marijuana through a storefront may be lawful under the law." The last page I'm giving you is the federal, I'm giving you a copy of the federal letter that went to all U.S. attorneys. And it specifically states in there that they are recognizing the state's laws for medical marijuana. And I've got a copy of each of these with it highlighted for you, which I would leave with your staff, so that you can have a copy of that. And the very last thing, because I know I've used my three minutes up, is that I also have a copy, this is an $8 million study that you've all paid for. It was SB 847. The results of it just came out in February. It was at the state Capitol. And it has to do with a study of medical marijuana and their uses as defined. And, you know, it's basically stating that there is a medical use. So we've got the state, we've got the federal government, and we've got local, and we've got $8 million study that just came through to support the patients. And what I would like to ask for you today is basically to reject the ordinance that's been put ahead of you. And to, rather than allow this type of ordinance, let's take a look at putting in rules and regulations that will meet your requirements and your guidelines for your city. That can be easily done. You just need to take a task force, get to work on it, really take a look at what it is you're looking at. They're right. In November, you have another initiative that's going to be coming through. That doesn't mean it's going to be legal for recreational use. What I want to see is that medical is defined aside from recreational use, because I personally don't support that initiative. I do look at the patients in a different aspect from recreational use. And you can set those guidelines right here in your city, and you can have it actually, you know, as a basis, so that if this does come through, the two are not combined. Put in your regulations, this is for medical only. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rich Miller, and I'm a local resident and cardholder here in Placer County. I also operate a collective in the foothills. I was injured three years ago on I-80 at Dry Creek Road, disabling myself for two years, totally bedridden on medication from my doctors, Dilaudid, Norco, Vicodin, Valium, and a great deal of pain, unable to move, totally bedridden. I took a chance of almost losing everything I'd worked 30 years to achieve. After going and seeing a doctor in Oakland, he pointed out some other treatments, alternative medicines. At that time, I got a card, and I started using creams, ointments. Found myself out of bed and able to function in society again. Without this medication, I would not have been able to do it. Severely injured, I had no other choice but to look to other alternatives to make my life work, because the medications the doctors were giving me was just too debilitating and was worse than the pain that I was experiencing. Going through this treatment, I changed my opinion on marijuana, because I did believe it was a recreational drug. But as MDA has approved, it is, effects are not replaceable by other drugs that could leave you debilitated and unable to work or function. I am in favor of this. Placer County has had on the books for 150 years a right to farm. As mostly you are aware, you have gone through the 60s and 70s. You all know that marijuana is an herb. So this is nothing more than a ban. I'm in favor for regulation. I know there's problems out there with people getting the medications. It's no different than it would be with cigarettes, alcohol, or beer for minors to get a hold of. If they want to get it, they'll get it. I don't think the patients should be sacrificed because a few people are doing things illegally. I am in favor of regulation. I'm not in favor of recreational use. I do think it has properties that need to be addressed, and I hope you guys make the right decision and not do a moratorium ban or anything else. Thank you for your time.
My name is Richard Taliaferro. I'm a resident of the unincorporated area of Colfax, and I'm also a member of the WAC MAC. My comments are my own. They're not reflective of the WAC MAC. However, I would like to make a correction. Crystal Jacobson was the one that made the presentation to the WAC MAC last month, and we did vote unanimously to reject the zoning tax amendment. We also voted to look in, to encourage you to look into alternative recommendations for regulation. I feel personally that the study that was done in the White Pages were both irrational and somewhat prejudiced in the fact that they say that citing, it was published by the California Police Chiefs Association, and it pointed to an incident in Canada where Asian, the medical marijuana dispensaries encouraged or fostered Asian gangs and outlaw motorcycle clubs such as the Hells Angels. I've never seen either one of those things in Colfax. And I also want to point out that those people in Colfax that would generally agree with a total ban on marijuana, if this ordinance passes, that dispensary would still be there. And other than people in Supervisory District 5, everybody else from all the other districts would have to come to Colfax in order to get their prescriptions filled. So even people that would generally be in agreement with this and are against any use of marijuana, we would still be stuck with the only dispensary in the county. And I don't think that's fair to us or our community. Furthermore, there was an address to the WAC MAC by a deputy sheriff who was very concerned about a recent inquiry.
Go ahead.
Can I continue?
Yes, go ahead. Finish up this.
Prior to this being an issue, a deputy sheriff brought up the fact that there had been a group of people that came to a local realtor wanting to buy a large tract of land that had water supply, specifically so they could do a marijuana collective. The deputy sheriff was very concerned, because there have been issues involving home invasion robberies. Again, Supervisory District 5 would probably be used more for the cultivation of legal use. And if this zoning tax amendment goes through, it would hinder that. I'm a contractor. I've been asked three times to assist in preparing property. I haven't had hardly any work in the last three years, and I've declined those opportunities because I don't want to get in trouble. If we can regulate this, I think it could possibly improve the economy. And again, it's going to affect the district that I live in more than any of the other districts. So I would just ask that you, as supervisors, look at this in a more realistic way than was done with that white paper and the effect that it will have on the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Debbie Blerton. We have All About Wellness at Collective in Sacramento, and we are a Placer County resident. And I would ask you, like he was talking about, looking at the white paper, before you make a decision on the ordinance, really take your time. And when you mentioned a task force, put that together, but allow some of us, who are working with the patients on a daily basis, to work with you so we can all come up with an idea that works both for the city and the county and the patients. So that's what I ask is, please take your time and put a task force together, but put it so you have some real information on what we do as a collective on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Philip Lerton, and that was my wife. And I'm just going to say one thing she forgot to tell you, is I would invite each and every one of you to our collective. You don't even have to make an appointment. We feel secure enough in our business to where you can show up anytime. We're open from 11 to 6, Monday through Saturday, and come and sit down and see the patients and see how we run our business and see what we could do in Placer County. So please come and see us before you make a decision.
Anybody else wish to address the board on this item? Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for comments or questions. Supervisor Rockholm.
In 2004, I believe it was in Roseville, I was on the city council when we went through this social experiment. And we did not have any ordinances on hand at the time, but a cooperative or dispensary opened up in Old Town Roseville. And my 20 years of law enforcement and three years of it undercover, I suspected what was going to happen, ended up happening. It became a criminal enterprise, and the Drug Enforcement Agency came in and eventually closed it. I am adamantly opposed to dispensaries in our county in any way, shape, or form. I believe there's other medications that work as well as marijuana. There's Marinol, there's synthetic THC. My three years undercover taught me one thing, that people that smoke marijuana, they want to get high. And that's why they smoke it. So I am very much in favor of moving forward with this zoning tax amendment, and we get it on the books, and we don't allow any dispensaries in Placer County. Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery.
This is obviously a very contentious issue that matters to people. It matters to me, both as the elected representative from District 5, because this did go to five of the six MACs that I represent. And those five all came out very strongly opposed to what the county is suggesting we do. Some of them had some alternative suggestions. Some of them just said, "Hey, we think the county staff is smart enough and talented enough and well-trained enough to figure out on their own what might work in terms of regulation." But the very strong message, the sentiment that came out from the MACs in District 5 was that banning these co-ops, collaboratives, and dispensaries was potentially short-sighted for a number of reasons. There were some expressed concerns about what liability it might potentially open Placer County up to. I believe you've all seen the, I think there's a letter from, I'll find the gentleman's name, David K. Brock, attorney-at-law, who is essentially putting us on notice. I know we don't make policy based on threats from attorneys, but the Forest Hill Forum very specifically just last night said that, you know, one of their concerns was that if state law is affected, which decriminalizes the various aspects of marijuana use, Placer County will be obliged to start from scratch on the issue, costing unnecessary money to be spent at a time when the county can ill afford it. Therefore, the Forest Hill Forum questions the logic of the timing of this proposed ZTA. And the message that I think was very clear from the MACs in District 5 was not that they were necessarily opposed to an outright ban as some future outcome, but that they wanted the county to wait, to see what happens with some of the pending litigation that's out there, and to see what happens in November, and then make an informed choice as to how to proceed from there. So essentially, what all the MACs asked for was a moratorium. They all opposed the ZTA in front of us today. The intent, I would say, from all of them was that we look at a moratorium, and based upon the next eight, nine months, we come up with an analysis of what options are available to us. And they were very clear in understanding that that analysis might be an outright ban or a moratorium on this. But they felt that it was in our best interest, both in District 5 and as a county, that we evaluate these opportunities, potentials out there to do different things. In support of that, I have been working with county council to come up with just some draft language. As Tony pointed out, this is not in front of us today. I don't expect any sort of decision on this today. We cannot, under law. But, for example, this is based on some other jurisdictions that have regulated medical marijuana and have been pretty effective at doing it. What it does is it bans, it bans these storefronts within 1,000 feet of schools, parks, daycares, churches, and I'm probably leaving something out, and only allows them in commercially-zoned areas where retail uses are allowed. I was hoping, Michael and I had talked about this, I was hoping actually for an overlay that would show what that would really mean on the ground in Placer County today, so we could have an understanding of where those uses might potentially be allowed. Due to staffing and budgetary constraints, we didn't get that. But I think that's something that might be both useful and enlightening to us as a board. So, you know, my intention here today is to suggest that we put a moratorium in place with the intention of letting this legislation get settled, letting the voters of the state of California cast their ballots this fall, and then we reevaluate. And we look at what other options are available to us than an outright ban. And as I say, I understand full well that we may come right back to this proposal where we are today. But I owe it to the residents of District 5, who were very clear in their opposition to this proposed ZTA, whether they were, you know, my right-wing libertarians or my left-wing, you know, tree-hugging eco-terrorists. You know, they were uniform in being opposed to what the county is presenting today. And it's my job to reflect that. So those are my thoughts.
Other board members have comments on this? Supervisor Wagan.
I don't know if everybody's got all their questions answered or not, but just in terms of comments, describe where I am. And I guess I see exposure to the county either way, if we had potentially an outright ban or potentially a wide-open opportunity for people to buy marijuana anywhere. For me, I think the issue should be resolved, if it were to be resolved, in a normal medical application, exactly the way any other medical drug is resolved. And then we wouldn't even have to worry about this. It would be a legal drug that would be prescribed by the doctor. Patients could buy that drug at a drugstore like they do any other drug, and then we wouldn't be in this position of trying to bridge this gap between what is probably not effective state regulation and law at the local level. So as we oftentimes find ourselves in local government trying to deal with issues that are not quite resolved, I think the only logical path at this point in time is to support staff recommendation with the ordinance. It may be an emergent issue, it may not, but at this point in time, I'm far more comfortable thinking that we will provide the best protection to our citizens with that path.
Supervisor Holmes.
I share Supervisor Rockholm's concern about the dispensaries and the crime that they may or may not cause. I serve on the Mental Health Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board. I see the effects on our society from marijuana use. I sit on the Emergency Medical Services Agency. Our emergency rooms are impacted by people that overdo marijuana. Our jails also have some issues with marijuana users. But in light of the information that we've seen here from the lady that presented that, and then this from Supervisor Montgomery, I'd be willing to wait and digest this information, but I certainly wouldn't wait until November. So I would be willing to revisit it, take a look at the information, maybe visit the dispensary in Sacramento. Those are my comments.
Okay. Nothing, Michael, if I may ask, nothing precludes the board from adopting the zoning tax amendment as proposed today, yet at the same time, I wouldn't say encouraging, but authorizing staff, given its limited dollars and resources, to create the study group or the whatever was proposed by way of a task force to look at the issue further, right? They are not mutually exclusive in that regard. That is correct. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'll make a couple more here. Jennifer, you mentioned litigation as well as the November legislation. As we unfortunately, as a board, know, litigation does, has its own time As we unfortunately, as a board, know, litigation does, has its own timeline. And if we await the outcome of all pending litigation as it relates to this issue, I suspect not many of us will still be around by the time that's fully litigated. By way of the November initiative, I have to suspect, having read the November initiative, that, quite frankly, it renders dispensaries moot. I would think that those people that are in the business of operating dispensaries would be some of the strongest opponents to the recreational use initiative, because it essentially puts those folks out of business. Allows for up to 25 square feet of growing space for individuals within their own homes. So if I've got that, why do I need a dispensary? So I don't know that the November legislation or the November initiative and awaiting its outcome really has any impact on what we're being asked to do as it relates to regulating dispensaries. So those are my comments. Supervisor Rockholm.
I'd just add, and I understand what Supervisor Montgomery's saying, and she's been responsive to her MACs, and she should be, but I think one thing to keep in mind is that marijuana still listens to Schedule 1 drug. That means it has no proven medical benefit or use. And it will remain that, and I don't see, in the near future, that ever changing. Irregardless of what happens in November, the federal, it's still, that law, if it would pass, would still be in conflict with the federal law. They haven't changed the federal law. You know, a different administration comes in, a different Attorney General, and the DEA is back doing what it's doing. All you have to do is look to our southern borders and see what's going on down there. I just saw firsthand 20 years of experience on the street, and I saw what happened in Roseville. And that man that was operating that, it turned out he was making money hand over fist. And I'm not saying the other people here representing their dispensaries, but it turned into an absolute mess in Roseville. Roseville changed its ordinance, disallowing it. The DEA took that dispensary down, and other agencies around us have put an ordinance in place, and they haven't been sued. Because some attorney says he can sue us, well, I don't know what he could sue us on by having an ordinance banning this type of use. So I would still encourage us to move forward with the staff proposal, and if they so choose, if you want to recommend that they look into this, I would not be opposed to that. But I don't, I just don't want to open the door to it.
Well, we need a motion, one way or the other.
I'll make a motion that we support the staff's recommendation.
And that would include the findings on pages 21 and 22?
Yes.
May I motion Supervisor Rockholm, and a second by Supervisor Wiegand to support staff's recommendation as it relates to modification. The zoning tax amendment, I should say, would include findings on pages 21 and 22. Supervisor Holmes?
I just need some clarification about revisiting the issue with the information that we received today. Is that?
I get your point, ma'am.
All right, then.
And I would just like to stress, however, that as my colleagues are aware, we just, I believe in January, reviewed the planning department's work schedule. They have a fairly aggressive work schedule with a number of different projects. And so I would leave it to the planning. It would be my preference, I'm not the maker of the motion, that it be left to the planning director's discretion as well time and dollars are available, as to where he sees that study placed on his priority list.
And Mr. Chairman, individual supervisors could meet with the planning director and express their concerns.
We have a motion to uphold the zoning tax amendment. Tony, did you have a question? Eric, come on.
Yes.
We have a motion to uphold the, or approve the zoning tax amendment as proposed by staff. We'll call, boys.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
No.
Euler?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our items in open session. We have a number of closed-session items that we will go and take up. But again, just to note that we will be adjourning today in memory of Stephen Krieger, 42-year Placer County road crew employee, in dedication to his service to Placer County. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Board, will we adjourn to closed session, take up the items that it has not yet considered on Page 5, Item 11?